Your lives.
Like to call an order, February 25th, 2025 Columbia Borough Council Meeting. Could I have a roll call, please?
Councilperson Zane?
Here.
Councilperson Kaufman?
Here.
Councilperson Stoff?
Here.
Councilperson Fisher? Councilperson B C?
Here.
Councilperson Murphy?
Here.
Councilperson Verdon?
Here.
Mayor Leila?
Here.
Uh, would anybody like to offer an invocation? If you'd like, please rise from over the silence. Chief Promer, would you like to lead us in the pledge?
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Announcement of executive sessions, there were none. Are there any additions, deletions, or reorganization of the agenda needed? Not aware of anything. And I have a motion to approve the agenda as published.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Councilperson Kaufman, second by Councilperson Stoff, to approve the agenda as published. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Uh, citizen comment, non-agenda items only. There's no signups. Is there anyone that wanted to speak that did not have a chance to sign up? Uh, minutes for approval. Could I have a motion to approve the Borough Council meeting minutes for February 11th, 2025?
So moved.
Second.
A motion by Councilperson Kaufman, second by Councilperson Stoff, to approve the Borough Council meeting minutes for February 11th, 2025. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Presentation and acceptance of reports, community development.
Yes, I'd like to pause to receive the zoning and planning reports for January 2025. Any questions? So, out of the planning commission meeting, a question came up about training. How do, how do our committee members go about training expenses?
Those associations.
Yep.
They have modules that you can onboard anytime, I believe.
No, 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 no. I understand that. I'm saying payment.
Well, you join as members and then you just go and...
We, we are members.
Yeah.
Yeah, we are members. Typically, what I do is, Eric, is, kind, went to the finance office and had them sign me up. Or some Steve signed me up.
They, they can contact staff and staff can get them signed out.
Okay. I don't think this was part of the Borough Association. I think it was a planning meeting.
I'm not, I'm not sure where this is coming from. We haven't discussed training in months at Planning Commission. And yes, the Borough Association has training available, but Planning Commission is not privy to that information. How do we know what's going on? Most, most of our training has come through Lancaster County Planning Commission. So if there's training available through the Borough Association, that has to be communicated to Planning Commission. We have no access to anything that the Borough Association could say.
Okay.
Okay.
I, I do correct myself, Mary. It was, it was actually a, uh...
Yeah, we didn't discuss...
It wasn't training. It was a, um, symposium or something?
Oh, it was the Lancaster County Planning Commission. They were having their, they used to do it by zones and now they're doing it in three different. It's their annual, uh, meeting.
What's the quarterly?
On the 11th. It used to be quarterly. Yeah, that's what. But with the training, thank you for bringing it up.
Yeah.
Because that is an issue. Been brought up before.
Yeah.
Boroughs Association, we have no access to any of that information.
I think the Borough Association website lists the training schedule.
It does.
So your folks could go on the website.
You know, if, if we could get that information, that would be fine. If someone could provide us, you know, access to that site.
I, I will. I will, Mary.
All right. Sorry to...
I, no, no, no. You're right. You're right.
I'm thinking, no, we have a...
I've done it, I've done it for zoning as well, so I'll...
Right. Okay.
Sorry about that. I, I just, I, I didn't know if there was like an account set up, like a training account that we could just go to? Because there's a number we use for that, correct?
Well, yeah, and you just have to like, you, you can do it and say register someone else and put in their name and, um, then it gets billed to our account if there's...
Okay.
If there's a cost.
All right. I'll try, I'll try to work something up that we can distribute that has those... At least, at least if you write a paragraph or something explaining how they're supposed to do it, and then I'll attach that with the trainings that are available to the different committees. Sounds good.
Yeah, I mean, well, and you'll have to keep doing it because...
They're updating all the time.
They're updating all the time. Cash spreads stood for one day.
Thank you.
Uh, safety and marketing.
Thank you. With the knowledge to receive public safety reports for Columbia Borough Police Department for January 2025, Columbia Borough Fire Department for December 2024, 2025 is coming. I'm sorry, January 2025 is coming. Columbia E M O C report for January 2025, EMS report for January 2025. Uh, acknowledge the receipt of the codes compliance report and condemnation report for January 2025.
Mayor Leetz, Chief Promer.
Could I, could I just take a moment to, uh...
Yep.
What would you call it? Improvisally agenda? Agenda improvisa- improvisation? Uh, as you know, last month during the public safety, uh, reports, we acknowledged Chief Rhino and his departure from the Columbia Borough Fire Department. Kevin? I've never met you before, I don't think, so I didn't recognize that that was you. But, uh, we, we had asked Kevin Kaiser, the new, uh, chief of, of Columbia 80, to join us that evening to welcome him. He wasn't in town, unfortunately. He's here tonight, so... Kevin, please take the stand. If you have anything to say, welcome aboard. Uh, I hope you're the best. We're all here to support you. Thank you for what you're doing. I know you spend a lot of time in the service. I think you're full-time as well, are you not?
Yes.
Yep, so you serve full-time. That's his occupation, and he's volunteering as chief for Columbia, so thank you for looking out for us and, uh, your dedication. Appreciate it. Glad to be with you and your, and your endeavors here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you want to share anything?
Oh, I'm good. All right.
He's a man of few words. I was at the banquet.
Yeah, I tried to recognize you, so...
All right. Uh, Mayor Leetz, Chief Promer.
Yeah, I have a couple things. First thing, we learned last week that one of our longtime Rossing Guards, Dewey Emery, had passed away.
Aww.
Dewey had some... Dewey, I'm sorry. Dewey Emery's brother, Dewey. Passed away. He, he was a staller at Sixth and, and Cherry. He developed such a rapport with the kids there. I stopped and talked to Dewey many times, uh, and the kids just, they, they couldn't wait to get up to the corner and, and be with him. He was almost like a father figure to a lot of, a lot of those kids. And he fell into some ill health and I guess it's been over a year now since, since Dewey was... And really, we just learned last week that, that he had passed away. There's going to be a service, and I think they're still trying to work it out in conjunction with his daughter. But I believe Pam is going to get that information, so we'll know. The other thing I want to acknowledge is that we had a tragedy in West York. A couple days ago, where a police officer was slain in performance of his duties. Columbia Borough Police Department was, and, and the Fire Department was available to escort the slain officer up to, what was it? Lehigh Valley.
Yeah, we, we simply recognized we didn't do the escort. We...
No, but I mean, you were there. Yeah, you were there. I saw the fire. I was there. So, that, that, that's a shame. A terrible incident. You know, it's, these guys put their life on, online every day. You never know when it's going to happen. Sunday, the Park Rangers had their annual meeting and it, it really turned into a great thing, and I have to mention it tonight. Number one, Jeff Goff, who was one of the co-founders of the Park Rangers 25 years ago, uh, was, was given a, given a citation by State Representative Miller out of the House of Representatives. I did a proclamation for him, uh, but, and, and that's great that he was there. It hasn't been there for 25 years. And kind of like our chief of, our fire chief, Kevin, uh, he's at just about every one of the events that the Rangers have. You know, our Rangers work hand in hand with our Shea Creek Commission. And we found out that night, and then the chief has been kind of working on it since, that this year on April 25th, Arbor Day, it's going to be down at River Park, down at the crossings. Dan Sod is going to bring his Earth Day event down there that day. And also, that's the same day as our, and chief can talk about this, as our community cleanup, which starts at 8 o'clock and we meet at J S Park. So we're going to have an 8 o'clock event. We're going to have a 5 o'clock event, I believe it starts, 5 to 7:30 event. And we'll break somewhere around 6 o'clock for the Arbor Day celebration, and then, uh, it'll continue on. And then, just so happens that that day, Barry Winkenheimer reminded me on Sunday, that it's also Fourth Friday. So we have a whole day of activities planned for that day on April 25th. Hopefully, we're going to have good weather because from what I'm hearing from Dan and the chief telling me, I correspond with Dan, it's going to be a lot of people down there. So look forward to that.
Just briefly on that topic, more information to come. Our, uh, community cleanup day will take place on, uh, Friday, uh, April 25th. Uh, we'll start at 8 o'clock in the, uh, Locust Street Park and we'll end at noon time. So over the next month or so, I'll continue to, uh, discuss the event and what's planned for that day. I also wanted to take a moment to, uh, recognize some employees for some outstanding work, uh, last week. Uh, that would be both the Police Department and the Codes Department. On, uh, not last weekend, but the weekend before would have been February 15th. Our officers, uh, night, one night shift, routine patrol around 7 o'clock, stop the vehicle for a, uh, minor infraction, brake light out. And, uh, the individual was later determined to be wanted for homicide out of Philadelphia. Uh, he also happened to not be a citizen. Uh, unfortunately, information was slow in getting out, uh, to the officers. They, uh, had to release him and sometime after a delay, uh, discovered the homicide warrant. And it was through their tenacity that, uh, they were able to track him down on the 200 block of Locust Street, hiding on a roof of a property. Uh, you know, putting themselves at risk, going up there and, and, uh, placing him under arrest with the assistance of West Enfield. Uh, also through the course of that investigation, they discovered an illegal rental, uh, in the property. Uh, communicated that information to, uh, the Codes Department. Codes responded, uh, Monday, Tuesday, went in, shut the place down and, and probably averted a fire, to be honest with you. There was, uh, very unsafe, uh, conditions uh, in this unrecognized rental property. So, uh, outstanding work from, uh, the police officers, codes. You know, teamwork continues to, uh, make, uh, major improvements to our community. So, thank you.
What was it? Follow three space, three electric space heaters, in the apartment with, uh, fed by an extension cord?
Extension cords coming from the first floor of the steps and into the second floor.
And, and they were running three electric heaters?
Portable washer against the heater in the bathroom that was hot. So, Deborah.
That particular residence, if that would have went out, we'd have had a devastating fire.
Jeff Frank.
Evening. Uh, I'd just like to ask, uh, what the rule or the law is on motorcycles being parked on payments?
Not permitted.
How about cars?
Not permitted.
Okay. Thank you.
Anything else, chief? Thank you. All right, um, first item we have is presentation, and I see Jason's here, and Derek, we're going to get an update on the McGuinness Innovation Park project.
Okay. Come on up, Jason.
Um, you guys have not met Jason Best. He's from E L A. He took over for Rick Jackson when he retired. We're over with Jackson.
Trying to. Trying to take over for Rick Jackson.
So I can, I'll set the stage a little bit here this evening. Uh, what, what Heather had requested of the team is, is we have kind of a two-piece update coming to council. Um, one piece being the technical update, um, which is what we're here to talk about tonight, what Jason's here to talk about tonight. And then the second piece being the financial update, that's going to hinge more on John B. Miller from county, um, who I understand is going to hopefully make it to a meeting here in the future, but he had a scheduling conflict this evening. He couldn't be here. Um, so Jason and his team have been, uh, working diligently on the site planning and the permitting needed to move forward with Phase One, um, which we're calling the, kind of the soil, um, stabilization phase. Jason, could you give them just kind of a quick rundown of the components that have been in the N P D S permit and kind of what we got there? Before you do that, what I do need to add, though, is something that has changed in a lot of discussions we've been having lately is, you know, the likelihood of a runway being out there and, and the drone concept moving in is, you know, not, does not look like it's going to happen unless something miraculous changes. Um, the team shifted a, a couple of months ago to focus more on this site as an overall development. And that was, you know, echoed in your last meeting when we started talking through the text amendments. So with that change, it has brought some different discussions on how the site should be stabilized and how it could be laid out if we move on to a future, um, construction phase. But for right now, uh, just to be very clear, the only thing that the team has been focusing on has been getting that soil stabilization ready for some future development, whatever that could be. There is no design for roadways or buildings or lots or anything else. We're dealing with one big open lot. And our goal right now is to take care of all of the bad soil and any of the things that were dumped out there underneath the soil and get that site, what we would call pad ready. So, anybody has any questions on that, we could dive into it now, but I want to give Jason a chance to, to kind of talk about what E L A's been up to.
Appreciate that. That's a pretty good synopsis. And, uh, so what E L A has been working on, and by the way, Jason Best is my name. Um, I am from E L A Group and we, uh, we've been at the table, uh, on this project since, I think, the very beginning, but I, you could correct me if I'm wrong there.
No, it's...
Um, I came in a little bit later, uh, personally, but have, uh, been attending these meetings at least for the last year. And, um, through the course of that time, um, there have been a couple of different efforts that have been, uh, sort of in parallel. And some of that has been, um, an effort to, um, deal with some of the properties that are ultimately going to be, well, have been added to, uh, the, the whole of the McGuinness, um, Innovation Park property. Uh, separating off some land that is really not developable and will ultimately just stay, uh, as, you know, reserved land that the borough will hold, uh, for whatever purpose may come up. But all the while, uh, there's been some geotechnical testing, um, some soils testing for, uh, you know, looking for substances that shouldn't be there, um, including, you know, just whatever junk was buried, um, through the course of all the flattening for the runways years and years ago. So there have been surveyors out there. There've been geologists out there. There've been geotechnical engineers. Derek's team at C S Davidson has been integral with the survey work and also with the subdivision. Um, you know, sort of running interference with, um, you know, some of the properties and, you know, looking at how to move the lot lines and so forth. All of that's resolved. Uh, subdivision plan has been recorded. And right about the time that happened, uh, we also received the N B D E S permit, which, uh, hopefully you're familiar with that. But essentially, it gives us the permit, the legal ability to move dirt around out there and actually, uh, go about the business of, of the Phase One, uh, work product, which is effectively to look at those areas where we've identified, uh, deleterious material that's been buried under those runways and remove that, sort it, uh, dispose of it as appropriate, and then relay that, compact it, and create a subsurface upon which, you know, building can happen with confidence. And so where we are today is having just received the N B D E S permit at the end of January, we are at the point where we're getting draft documents together to go out the bid for the initial remediation work. And a lot of what E L A has been doing has been to, um, you know, prepare the drawings that the contractors would use to actually guide that work. Um, so I think that's a pretty fair overview of where we're at, but I'll pause and, you know, put it up for any questions or, you know, Heather, any of the other folks here that are, you know, in the know. If I've missed something important, feel free to chime in.
As you move dirt around, and I know this is, this may not be, you may not be able to do this, but as you move dirt around and then you're going to create basically a stable surface that you said, that you're going to say paddle or... Will you be looking at stormwater? In other words, wind and melt, the stormwater may go. Because I, I hate to see you go in there and remove the, the things and then stabilize the soil and then turn around and back in and tear it all up.
So it's a good question. And part of the challenge is, is that we don't know ultimately what's going to get built and where. So this effort initially will be really focused on getting the ground prepared for whatever comes next. And our commitment to D E P is to restore the surface to a similar, uh, vegetated cover that, that exists out there today. So at the end of the day, we're going to step away from this as part of Phase One with the obligation to make sure that it's stabilized, meaning there's grass or some other vegetation growing there. And that, uh, everything from a runoff perspective is pretty much happening at the same way it would have, like, today. So it's almost getting it back to ground zero, so to speak, but having done all this stuff that you don't see, that sort of sets the stage for all the development that can and will occur, if that makes sense.
Yeah, well, I know there are some, and I don't...
Sure.
Probably will.
I was just going to...
I don't see you filling them in.
I was just going to say that, Mayor, especially on the, kind of the western portion as the, you know, there's a draw through there as it comes down towards where Plain Street is.
Yes.
We all, everyone on the project team feels like that's a prime area for stormwater, especially if stormwater is done regionally out there. This is something else we don't want to throw out. There's a possibility that whoever develops this could develop it in pieces and there's onsite stormwater for everything that happens. Or this could be developed in a manner where there's one or two big regional basins that everything goes to, and then the sites can just be built without it. We're not sure, but you're right. We're not, we're not going to go into those low areas and excavate them and build them out. What we're ma- and actually, those areas don't pose a problem because they haven't been filled. So we're not looking at going in anywhere that hasn't been filled and tearing that up and putting it back. It's the fill areas that we're trying to address with this first phase.
I mean, it's almost like that. Perfect spot. It's already made.
Right.
Will the old hangars come down? During the first phase?
Well, that, that's part of the demolition that we have...
Correct. So, so we, yeah, what we would, yeah, what we have as part of the 700 Franklin Street demolition is the, is the, is that property at 700 Franklin, and then also the remaining, uh, big garage that's out there. Um, we would take, we're proposing to take down any vertical concrete block structures that remain in the hangars, but the concrete floors, we're proposing to leave those in place. They'd just be, and then as part of the Phase Two, excuse me, demo phase is one. We'll call that Point Five. I'm sorry. I don't mean to confuse everybody. We're doing the demo phase first, then the Phase One is actually the soil, um, stabilization. When that contractor comes in there with their big equipment, the plan for that would be to poke holes in anything that's out there that would have a concrete pad in it. That's also when we're going to address the foundation for the 700 Franklin Street House. And basically, that's clean fill, that, that, those concrete pads. So all we need to do is basically penetrate those to make sure we can get soil and water flowing freely throughout them and they can mainly stay in place. So that's why we're breaking, that's why we're breaking it up. We thought it was better to do the demolition of any of the vertical structures with a demolition contractor and then bring in an earthwork contractor for everything else. I will say, I have not advertised the demolition of, I've not advertised that project yet. You've authorized it. I have it. It's about ready to go. Um, but since there have been a lot of questions from council just on this project lately, I felt it was best to hold until we get through all of these presentations and you get all your questions answered and we have a better direction.
Will this phase of remediation address the wooded areas that would eventually be built? Or is that part of the area that you were mentioning won't be touched? Like, will that get logged as a part of the remediation?
Um, I don't think so.
So the only wooded areas that are really on the slate to be disturbed right now are the ones that are directly growing on top of this fill material that Mr. McGuinness would have placed in the effort to level it out for his runways. Um, so they're not real high quality. They haven't been there for, you know, huge, long times. But yeah, to, to your point, there's going to be some, some removal of trees. And, um, you know, that will perhaps generate some lumber for someone. I'm not exactly sure what happens to that or what quality those trees even are. Um, it may be that they just get chipped up, uh, into wood chips and used to help stabilize, you know, when it gets muddy out there.
Yep.
Um, can we also address, um, at what point do we need to start moving into the final site design? And how long will that take to get that done to a point that we can apply for a N P D E S permit?
Part of the challenge there is, I think, coalescing around the plan. Because, you know, as I mentioned, this initial effort gets us to the point where we have a clean slate.
Right.
Um, it doesn't do anything else. So to your point, you know, there, there will be a need, you know, if development is to occur there, to promote a plan. And to, you know, take that through the process. And part of that is the N B D E S process. We have a permit which can be amended with the second phase. Um, so there's some economy there if the borough is the applicant, or that can be transferred to another entity if necessary.
So we wouldn't have to do a whole, like, we wouldn't be sitting here waiting for more months necessarily?
Yeah, it's a, it's a major amendment. It, it'll shave a couple of months off, but yeah, it's, it's not like it's a, it's a two-month turnaround, but yeah, there is...
Still, that's good.
Yeah, it saves time and money from a, a full review. It always, it's always more economical to do a, a major amendment than a, than a brand-new permit.
Yeah, I, I don't want to make that seem like it's a fantasy. It's...
No, I know. But I, yes.
It, it, you know, we, we've got 95% of the work left, essentially. Um, so... It, it, you know, we've, we've got 95% of the work left, essentially, so.
What's the timeframe for the remediation Phase One?
Three months?
You mean, when permits are in place, when a bidder is actually.
When, when the bidder, when, when the bidder's selected and they start, we're talking months.
Yeah, so.
Just a couple months?
Um, well, part of the challenge is, you know, on the engineering end of things, I don't quite have a feeling for who the contractor's going to be and what kind of manpower they have and equipment, but, you know, I think it's probably safe to say that this is a three to four month process in the whole, if they're out there, you know, five days a week.
So by the end of summer, we should see.
We should have a nice.
Yeah, I mean, and the goal would be that, you know, if we start this late spring, early summer, by the time things finish up, we're still in the growing season, you know, grass can start to grow and, you know, even if it sits for next winter, it's, it's going to be stable.
Which is why the decisions need to be made sooner rather than later as to final disposition because we want to be able to get that site plan moving and finalized so we can start that process, get that movement over the winter so that we don't have so much time between Phase One and Phase Two if we're doing that.
Now, to bounce off of your first question about the final design plan, if, if I'm not mistaken, this current remediation is based upon our former design with counting on that runway being used as a runway again. If I'm, am I correct on that or?
You pivoted from that.
Okay.
So in the original plan, assuming that the runway was going to be a runway, that requires a much lower level of stabilization than a building pad would. So what we've done is we've pivoted and basically extended the amount of fill stabilization area to include most of the runway. What we discussed in recent weeks that made just a lot of sense to the team and borough staff is that the ends of that lower runway, you know, you've got some very prominent kind of juts with some very steep fill banks. We've decided to go with a lower level of stabilization in those areas. That, that would be a very high cost to get a building-grade stabilization there, and from our standpoint, the likelihood of a building actually being on those outskirts of the lower section of the project is pretty slim. There, there are going to be parking lots or storage areas or maybe some small outbuilding, but you're not going to get anything real heavy there. And if so, then whoever wants to put it there could potentially, could bear that cost to, to stabilize it, but we didn't feel that it's a valuable investment of your money to try to make those areas up to a, a capacity to hold a building. But we do believe the, you know, I'll say the center two-thirds of the runway, absolutely, that can, that can be building space. Again, if, if we knew exactly where the buildings were going, this could be a little bit more of a targeted stabilization. That said, there's a lot of fill out there and there's also some benefit to being able to strip this whole thing down and compact it all uniformly. So we want to give you a, a blank canvas out there, and, and that's really been our main focus as a team up until really this point where we have to start having some conversations about what, what does it look like out there. We're, we've talked a lot about constructing, you know, Franklin Street extended to meet 11th Street. Made a big, that made sense to put that loop road in. We're not sure if we want to do that unless we know who the end user, user is. So those are, those are where the conversation, I think the next year is going to be very interesting, assuming that we, assuming that council decides to close on the BIOS loan and assuming that that money is drawn to move forward with Phase One, then we have to have a lot of discussions about what that next step looks like and how far that goes. And that's where I'll really, Jason will probably agree with me, we, we hope you, we're, we're the designers, so we hope you strongly rely on the Economic Development Corp. and to get some advice on, you know.
Cost benefit.
Cost benefit users, and again, that's really what we've been looking at now, what's been the cost benefit of remediating to this level, remediating this area, that got us to where we're at.
Oh, and the other, the other change, and it, it's not necessarily a change that is set in stone, originally with, with that runway, there was, off of that L between Franklin and 11th, there was then a cul-de-sac that came off.
Right.
Of that end to go to the candy cane. Without the candy cane there, we don't necessarily need that cul-de-sac, so then we will just sort of look at it.
The candy cane?
The candy, that was the building.
Okay.
The, the drone, it, it looked like a candy cane.
I got you.
I'm a little confused, I'm, I'm not real sure. I thought when we last spoke about this project, we were all in agreement that we were going to do the remediation, leave it kind of an empty lot, and then sell it to whomever wants to put whatever they want on it. I'm a little confused, we're talking about plans for pad sites and cul-de-sacs. I thought we were just flattening it out, making sure it was ready to build on and then selling it, let somebody put a warehouse on it or buildings or whatever it might be.
That, I, I think that's where, where we were talking about, but.
Am I, am I?
No, it's sort of the same thing. I mean, it, we're just saying that it could have had sites, you know, and I said, the cul-de-sac wasn't needed.
Let, let me jump in here, Heather.
Yeah, I'm, I'm kind of.
So Todd, I think you got half, halfway. That has long been talked about as a, as a jump-off point for the borough, and I still think it could be, but your BIOS application, the business in our sites application, does factor stabilization of the site and construction of public improvements. So your, your $8 million in BIOS funds would include installation of streets, utilities, lighting, could be regional stormwater. We're not proposing to build any buildings as a borough, but the BIOS loan that, that the borough applied for and, and received does include that phase. Now, something we've asked John B. Miller at the county to advise council on is where you sit right now, what are your options? Because you are at the point now where if you want to move forward with the site, site stabilization, you're going to have to close on the BIOS loan. You haven't done that yet. The site stabilization will only take a portion of the loan that you've been, and remember, it's, it's part grant, part loan. It's a, it's a 40% grant, 60% loan. The site stabilization will only take a portion of that money. What we're unsure of is what strings are attached if the borough decides to close on the whole $8 million loan and potentially only do part of it and then jump off. We've asked John to research that and, and look into that.
Either way, if it, wouldn't, if we were going to move forward with planning, wouldn't we do that after we have a buyer and know what the use of the site is going to be? And if, if we do have a buyer and they determine, well, we were, we were thinking A, B, C, they're thinking one, two, three, can we use those BIOS funds to accommodate a buyer and put that infrastructure in using our funding?
Right, that's something.
Is that, is that what you're talking about? I'm not sure where they.
Well, I think when the BIOS loan went in, I think the picture was a lot clearer at the time that you were building a runway and hangar space for a drone company and a road network that would have supported that. So we had much fewer questions at the time that the borough submitted the BIOS loan. Now that the scope has changed, we have questions on who the end user is. Is that one big entity who's going to develop the whole thing? Was there still an approach that the borough was going to put in a road and sell pad sites? I know that isn't necessarily the route the council wants to go. Financial question for John B. Miller, can you, can you basically enter into a partnership with a developer and fund it through BIOS to get it to where they want? I, I'm not sure, does that, is that a formal and informal?
Right.
Where did, where did the BIOS loan come from?
It's a, it's a state loan.
Federal financing.
Yeah.
From the state.
Right.
That's easier. So the remediation is being paid for through the BIOS loan.
It's going to need to be.
It's going to need to be, yes.
So we need the BIOS loan, no matter what, we need the buyer's.
That, yes, unless, unless you decide to self-fund this first phase, which I would not recommend.
Do we have to take the whole BIOS loan? Like, can we make a decision that we don't want to do the lighting and the streets and everything, we just want to do the Phase One?
That's what I've asked John B. Miller to, to research and, and discuss with you all.
That's what we've asked John to.
Yep.
Yes, Mary.
The only reason I come up here is if you're watching at home, you can't hear if somebody's back there. I'm going to go back to the remediation. And Derek is, I was out there that day that you were out there speaking with my daughter. And at that point, you had said what was intended to happen is that soil would be taken off, it would be taken away, it would be somehow cleansed and then put back in place. Is that what we're still talking about?
It, it won't be, it won't be taken off-site. It will be, it would be removed, it would be sifted, and it would be compacted and placed back in lifts. Anything that's found that isn't suitable, like if we run into, if we run into contaminated soil, that's going to have to go. If we run into organics, we're, we're positive that in many situations, there were just trees pushed over and soil put on top. Those trees are still there. Wood is pretty amazing when you just, when you bury it, it's pretty incredible, it just kind of stays there, so.
You've got an archaeological thing going on.
Exactly. So, so we're, we're suspecting that once we get down into what was the original grade of the project, that there will be, again, some organics, some trees, that as Jason mentioned, there's probably going to be a chipper on site, we'll have to chip up. What we're unsure of now, and we're, we're trying to estimate as best we can, there's always a swell factor in the soil, there's a shrinkage factor. So right now, what we're proposing is, we're proposing to take all of this up down to the original grade and then put it all back.
How do you know what the original grade is out there?
Uh, we can, we have, we have some pretty good evidence from the soil borings. That's what the geotechnical report did. So they, they put big, they put big borings down there and they know, hey, this is all fill soil, bam, now we're hitting a original, original level. Yep, you can tell.
Okay. Are the residents out there going to be notified of this work being done out there? Truthfully, where my daughter is, it's probably going to be on two sides of her. It's going to be there back at Franklin Street. It's going to be running, going out towards, probably out past where the old hangers were. But, you know, will the residents out there be notified when this work is going to happen? Give them an idea of what they're going to be facing. If this is happening over the summer, you've got people that are out there with windows open, you know, if you're following me.
Sure, sure.
You know, they need to know.
Sure. So this, this will obviously follow all of the borough bid requirements, it's going to be advertised, it's going to be authorized to advertise here, it's going to be advertised, we're going to have to have a council meeting to open the bids and award the project. So at a minimum, there's that. If, if borough wants to take it a step further and, and send personal letters to the residents, that's not a bad idea. It's not a requirement of the permit and, you know, again, it's all the same.
I just thought when all this began, there was statements made that the, the residents of the area out there would be kept in view as to what was happening, you know? At this point, nobody knew what was happening. And I think, I know right now, I'm here because my daughter's going to be here, she's working this evening, and, but we had discussion and there's were some of her concerns and, like I said, I happen to be out there the day you met her, and those were some of the things I wanted to get clarified on. Okay, thank you.
Yes, Sharon.
Just have a couple quick, this doesn't sound like it's on, but I guess it is. I have a couple questions about following up with what Mary Wickenheiser just said. Borough manager Stivers had promised that there would be a meeting held with those people, he was going to do it at the fire hall, is my understanding. So I don't think that ever took place with the residents out there, but that's what he said was going to happen. The other thing is, I was wondering about how the quarry will be secured, if anybody knows what they're going to do with that.
I would agree with that.
Secured, like, will there be, I mean, I never saw it, so.
That's, that's going to be subdivided off. It's separated by a steep slope.
Yeah.
So that won't be impacted at all.
Okay, so there's not a need for fencing or anything like that? Okay. And this might come in with the check thing after this, but there's an Act Two that we paid for, an Act Two report in the check signing tonight, and I just wondered where we can read that, where we can see that report regarding this project.
Yeah, we should have that. I don't know if it's finalized.
I don't think it's finalized yet.
Yeah.
Kay said she was still working on it.
Yeah.
So would the check be signed just for the work that's been done so far?
Work in progress.
Yeah. All right, thank you.
ECS, ECS is the consultant that the borough is working with on that Act Two.
Okay, but in the end, that report would be made public?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Yeah, it's a DEP, yeah, it's a DEP report, so.
Okay, very good, thank you.
Yes, Frank.
Thank you, Todd, for asking some questions about being confused, because I know the meetings that I come here, it seems like every meeting, something changes, that council doesn't know which way they're going on it. The last thing was all the noise with the industry and everything, so I'll kind of get right to that first. I guess the scene in the paper, that the state got their funding back, is that going to put their drones back in contact with the, the grants that was coming out?
The grant that was applied for was a federal grant.
Okay, that, then that wouldn't have nothing to do with that?
No.
Well, is federal money divvied out by the state? What, what happened today? Yesterday?
My, my understanding is it wasn't, they didn't, the, the drone come, the drone folks did not get the grant. It's not that the grant went away, it's that the money was awarded elsewhere.
Oh.
There could be opportunity for future funding, but I don't think the borough wants to wait around for that.
No.
Okay. And from what I heard this gentleman, by the way, is he on your payroll or is he on the borough's payroll, this guy?
Borough's.
Well, no, he's not on our payroll, he's our, he's a consultant.
For the borough, but?
Yes.
The borough pays him directly?
Correct.
Okay. From all the meetings that I come to, my understanding is the borough did a lot of testing there, so now there is a chance that there's still evils in the ground. Am I correct?
At, at this point, I think we know what's there, but you never know. I mean, yeah, there could be, but.
They didn't do borings of every square inch.
Right, they didn't do borings of every square inch.
Okay.
No.
And do I understand we're taking the whole runway up down to the original grade? Why?
Southern one.
Why?
Because the soil was not placed in a compacted state, the soil was just dumped.
Wow.
So you can't, you can't build anything on it in its current state or else whatever you build on, it's going to sink.
Certainly at the end, we're not taking it.
Yeah, just not, yeah, not, as I said before, not at the ends of the southern one, because we're not compacting that area anymore, but in the center section. The issue, Frank, is we want to have, we want this to be a blank canvas that you could construct a building on, basically anywhere you need. The only way that you could build a building on it right now is if you basically build it on piers, because you would have to get down below the fill material that's there to get into anything that's stable enough to handle the loads of a building. So it's actually more economical in the long run, and the issue is, is the unknowns of the site. The borough remediates this, this is something John B. Miller did. The Borough remediates this, this is something John B. Miller did say at the last meeting, is there is likely more value in this site if the Borough eliminates the unknowns of how much fill, what's the stabilization rate? What do I need to do to get a foundation stabilized? If we can move forward with this and eliminate all those questions and say, we have this site that's completely stabilized and ready for you to build whatever you want to build within this area, that it adds a significant value and marketability to the land.
The bad thing is, it all adds to the costs that we hope that we'll get out of it. When George did that, he, he had people drop off the different fills from amenable fill and wherever. I guess the people paid him mostly to do that, and he used his old bulldozer to do that. Now, I guess if you see there's voids there, it's probably when you do a core test, you probably did a test, do you see spaces in there that shows you that this is not compacted solid?
There aren't, um, I don't have the Geotech report in front of me, and I'm not a Geotech expert, but I, I don't, when you, when they're doing the soil borings, they're not finding like big gaps of material, Frank. What they're finding is they're finding, here's the, let's say the table is the historical grade. And they're saying from the table up, it's basically just fluffy soil. It's whatever, as you said, whatever was trucked in, whatever was placed, which is kind of piled on there. So the, uh, the type of material is mixed and the compaction level of the material is all over the place. It's just not of a, not of a condition that anybody could build anything of substance on it.
Okay.
Yeah, at, at its current state.
All right. And, and the quarry, we're going to build something around that, that nobody, you're going to drain it? What are you going to do with it?
It's staying, it's not being touched.
Well, how are you going to keep personnel from getting in it?
I mean, just like now, I mean, it's not going to be any different than it is now.
Well, you're going to have activity out there, you're going to have parks and whatever, you're going to have more people around.
But we're, we're not going to have that yet. I mean, at this point, we're just stabilizing the earth, we're not.
No, but what, what do you have in mind? Don't you think ahead and, and wonder how are we going to protect our liability?
Well, yeah, but, I mean, that's several years down the road. I mean, we want to, at this point, we just want to, we just want to expand tax base and, and, you know, get the income. That's going to be a couple of years down the road. I'm not, I mean, and well, who knows what things will look like by then?
The land, as, as the mayor said, the land, including the quarry, that whole southern end, was subdivided off of the business park. It's its own parcel that will remain in Borough ownership. While there have been discussions about a future park or conservation area or nature trail, there are currently no active plans or efforts right now to do that. We're not even discussing it. It, it's just sitting there right now. The focus is on the business park. And if there's an appetite from council or the Borough manager at some point down the road to start pursuing that as a project, then that's something that can happen. Right now, it's just sitting there.
And your plans, or is the Borough going to build the buildings that the?
No.
You're not going to do no building whatsoever, just putting the infrastructure in?
We don't even know that.
Possibly, we don't even know that yet.
Well, see, that's my problem. I don't know of anyone on council that's ever done this. And I think your Borough manager, Mark, talked us into this, probably like he did down in Florida. He had something similar to that down in Florida, it never worked out. And, and when I come to the meetings, you, you don't have a plan. I asked, are you going to rent, rent the spaces, you going to sell them? Well, we don't know. Now, according to the LPN, you're going to sell them. So you, you just don't have a clear plan, that's what bothers me. And along with that, along with that, at this point, how much do we have invested in this shelter? With the buying of the property, the bills, the, at this point? And, and can you tell me how much?
No, not, no, it's not that, because we got the money. It's just under $2 million.
I can't believe it. That's hard to believe.
What do you mean?
I just, I can't believe that was all that you've got invested there. You had, you had to buy the extra buildings, the house that you're selling now. I can't come up with everything offhand. Who's keeping track of it?
The finance department.
And it's been in your, it's been in, if you look at the, the year-end reports that are online, because I, I looked at them a couple of weeks ago. You can look at the year-end finance reports for this project specifically. It is laid out. If you look at the, the last meeting in December, it shows you exactly what has been spent out there.
Right, and keep in mind, we also received a million dollars from the state upfront.
Yeah, I knew, I knew we got that. Another question.
Frank, can I ask?
And part of, part of, you also have to remember, there were two parcels that were originally in that tract that we sold, so that money goes back in as well.
How much was that about?
A total of $166.
Of the properties that were sold?
Yeah, because one of them's one you bought.
Well, that, but that was, yeah, but the other, you can't.
That was bought as part of the McGinnis property.
That was bought as part of the McGinnis.
Yeah, because the other one down, what's called, that one.
On Knight Street.
That was also.
Yeah, yeah, I had another question, I can't remember what it was. But anyway.
Sorry, Kelly, go ahead.
But, I mean, you're making it look like we don't know what we're, like, the council doesn't know what we're doing. It's not that, I mean, when initially, when I, I don't counsel initially, this was going to be, you know, the innovation part with, with the runway for the drones. Now that that is, and when, when you had that known, they knew what, you know, you knew what the plan was going to be. You knew where the roads were going to be, you knew where you had to put, where we had to invest infrastructure and where we had to put it. Now that they've pulled out, you know, it's like, why would you jump, move ahead and put infrastructure in when you don't know what the next, you know, the next developer is going to bring, bring in? We might work with them to do that, or they might just come and say, we'll take the site as it is and we'll put the infrastructure in. So that's, you know, it's kind of like, we're, we can't tell you where, where we're going to put the infrastructure if we're going to invest in that yet, because who knows what the next developer will come in after everything's been remediated and we have a good solid surface? So it's, it's kind of a wait-and-see game right now, but that's really what it is. You know what I mean?
I, I missed, I, I walked out the last meeting. What you said talked about putting industrial, is it industrials? You were talking about putting out there was a lot more traffic, truck trailers and everything? Am I correct?
Yeah.
Is that still to go?
Well, that's what we're, we were, we were doing the table permitting uses. That's not what is definitely going to be there, that's just what we're allowing to be there now. Who knows what a developer will want to locate there?
With certain special exceptions.
Right.
Built in. Or special, special things that need to be, qualifications that need to be met.
There won't be any entrails, though.
No, the one thing they talked about, Frank, was like you said, tractor trailer traffic and that going out, the back, shall we say, going out the 441. Right now, currently can't do it because the road's not built fit. But you might get a developer in there that says, hey, that's, that's what has to be done. And they, they would have to invest their own money in doing that, in making that tunnel wider, making it through three lanes to get through. So that's kind of the conversation we're having, if that would happen. That's, that would be on them to spend their money to do that, though, not us.
Yeah. And Eric, did I understand you say that they're trying to get somebody to develop and do everything? Just have one person over this whole thing?
No, no, it's, that, that has, that's being discussed as an option.
Oh, okay.
But again, where, where we're at right now, Frank, is, correct me if I'm wrong, we are literally at the point where we are deciding what the next step is after the remediation. Okay? So what does that look like? You have to decide whether you're going to try to sell it, if you're going to try to work with somebody or multiple people to develop it, if you're going to install infrastructure and sell pad sites. That's what has to be determined. And that's, I think, a bigger decision that needs to be, that's where I said, you need to lean on your economic development corp who understands what is the available land out there for this use? What does it go for? What are, what people can come to the table? I know the Boroughs received calls on this, but just haven't been in a position to really talk seriously about it.
Right.
You're, you're very much at a, you're very much at a point now where the Borough needs to decide, yes, we're going to close on the bios loan and do this Phase One soil stabilization along with the demolition project and then reevaluate? Or we're done right now, not, you know, put it for sale sign? You could still do that.
But again, we want to make sure that we are maximizing our return on investment as well as, we want to keep in mind that we don't want this to sit fallow for an extended period of time, because the whole point was to expand the tax base. And if it sits naked for an extended period of time, we've not expanded the tax base.
Well, going, going along with what you said, in order to know where you're going, you need estimates like on the infrastructure and whatever all you're going to do, so you know what you're going to end up with. You might never, you might even be in the hole when you get this done.
Right, and that's what's in the process right now is that EDC, John B. Miller, is working on getting us some of these answers, working on getting, uh, current estimates for, you know, potential costs to do different portions of the infrastructure.
Yeah.
So we have, so we can make a good decision.
Yeah. What I, what I do want to clarify, though, is that was done as part of the bios application.
Right, it was.
So it, the, the value of the land, the value of the soil stabilization and the value of the potential improvements was factored into what the ultimate value of the land would be. It's called the pro forma. And that was the packet that was submitted with the bios loan to justify getting that. So that was done, and it was proven to be, again, the whole goal of this has been break even and get properties on the tax rolls. So at the time that the bios application was made, that was done. We've recognized that with the drones not being there and now we're a couple of years later, it needs to be reevaluated, and that's what we're doing right now.
Right. I mean, because costs had, costs had blown up and things like that. But also, with the drones out, we have more developable land. So, you know, it, it might be a watch.
Could be a win.
Could be a win.
Well, that's what I would hope, but I, I don't know if I'll be around to see it or not, but.
You will.
But, um, again, it just left me, so I'll keep it for the next time.
No disrespect, Frank, but, uh, you know, I would argue that council wasn't influenced, influenced by Mark Stivers in this project. Here's what I do know. That property was up for sale multiple times prior to Mark even being here. Nobody wanted it. It was unsellable. We even, it was even offered to the Borough at a major discount. I was on council at that time, and we talked about, what does it look like to pre-municipal park back there? Move all of the infrastructure for the Borough, public works, police, fire, parks, soccer fields? What does it look like to put that back there? It was just undoable. That, that land would be still sitting there with cornstalks on it come spring, if this opportunity with the drones thing come by. To me, I think it was perfect timing. I think it was the right move. We talked about all of the risks involved with it. Yes, there are risks. You know what? There are risks to not doing anything as well. Do nothing, risks. So I think that this was a well-managed, risk-assessed project that we all talked about at length. Had a lot of buy-in from a lot of the right people and just had to pivot. I think anything that, that is a success requires a pivot. Nothing ever goes the way you want it to. And I think the folks that are successful are the ones that learn how to pivot. And that's what we're doing, we're pivoting. So I'm all in, I can see the future being bright for the Borough, and I think we're going to get that, that tax base that we're looking for. And we need it, we need it.
You're probably most right in what you said, except for you said nobody wanted it. Klingright wanted that bad. But McGinnis would not sell to him because of his last name. But there was one other person that was.
I wish Klingright was here.
And the other thing is.
We just talked about that.
And the other thing is, you're saying you take a chance, and this is what you have to do. You win, you win, you lose, you lose. But you're losing for the whole Borough, hung it too, when you lose. So you have to keep them in mind also. And when you win, you would win for them. So, we're both ways.
Yeah, thanks, Frank.
Something that I think people may have forgotten already, um, as part of the bios, we also had to have an appraisal done of the property as is. And it appraised for significantly more than we actually paid for it. So we were already ahead at that point.
Always ask the appraiser if he would pay that for it. He might appraise it for you, but ask him if he would pay it. You know, he's going to do it because you, you give him a job, and you're paying him.
Leo, would you agree with me, this is really isn't a whole, I mean, it's a much smaller scale project, but it's really my, kind of a lot different than what we went through with the Turkey Hill experience years ago. I mean, it's either that or I have an empty warehouse shelf in there.
I think Todd phrased it very well. This is a lot like the Turkey Hill experience, and this is, these are my thoughts. And I think we talked about this last two weeks ago. The best bang for your buck, as was talked about here tonight, and I think Todd put it, started with it, is to sell the, sell the whole place as one parcel. Because if you start breaking it down into lots and pigeonholed it, you're not going to end up 20 years from now with four or five lots sitting there. Where if you sell the whole thing, and yes, Kelly, Turkey Hill experience, first, first offer in on Turkey Hill, on that property, was Royal Farms. And council said, no, we don't want that type of business there.
Thank God.
Went back to Turkey Hill, Turkey Hill committed and said, we want to build a Turkey Hill experience there, but we're going to have to put a convenience store there for people to get gas who are traveling to the Turkey Hill experience and also help offset our costs. Council said, that sounds better than the previous one. So the land was developed and it was, it was set up according to that. What you see around the county right now is, is something we're kind of talking about. You know, you get a developer to come in and they tell you what they want to do. And then you set your zoning according to what they want to do on that property. You know, I, I, I tend to disagree with going through and setting all this zoning up, because you may be shut, having potential buyers shy away from what you have as permitted uses. Find out if the use they want is, is what, what you want, and then make it match. To me, that's the best way to work. And then, then you will have motive, you will have developers coming in saying, this is what I want to do, and you can say, yeah, like Turkey Hill, yeah, that sounds good. Or no, we don't want that. Okay? But, so, so you're not held to, to something, you know? To me, that's the way to go, and Todd was kind of talking about it that way. Because to me, the best bang for the buck is to sell that property. And as Todd said, if the bios loan can be partly, if the Borough can partner with the bios loan, and I think Heather talked about that too, if we can transfer it or partner with them to put the streets in and the, the other infrastructure where they want it. You know, I was always skeptical at the beginning when they were talking about putting these roads in, and I thought, well, you're going to put a road in, who, what if someone says, I need more than that piece of property? Because you got this thing cut down with the road, don't put the road in, let them put the road in. That's what developers do. You know, you look around at housing developments or manufacturing developments, whatever, how do you, business parks? They put the roads in after they know what's going to go in there. And that's what I think we should be doing.
Well.
Send them a blank slate, put the shingle out and sell.
But along with that, we have to make sure that we are complying with the terms of the BIOS.
That's what I'm saying. You got to.
Because if BIOS says we have to have the roads in there, then, you know, we put the roads in there. The other option that we had talked about was if we know that per, for the borough map that we want that L, maybe we don't put the road in, but we actually add it to our map. So that when the development happens, the road has to go in.
And, and there's, there's ways to go about this.
Well, right.
Bottom line though is sell the whole chunk. That's the bottom line.
I think it, I think it makes a good point. And to Frank and to all the questions and comments going on, it's like, this is us in the process of reevaluating it and looking at all of our options. And I think it's okay for us to, you know, take some time and breathe, even though we want to get the, keep the project moving, at the same time, we want to make sure we're looking at each of our options with adequate time to make a good decision on it. So this is us working that out. Frank, I mean, you ask about us, you know, coming across with mixed messages. Well, there have been lots of ideas about what to do with this property, but this is us working out and looking at, looking at our options right now. And we didn't, we didn't really even have a no from the drones until a month ago.
Right.
And we didn't have an MPDS permit to do anything about the ground until a month ago. So we're, it's really, it's fresh, it's back on the table and I think this is us working at, starting the conversation of what we want to do in the future.
Well, and technically we don't have a definite no from the drones. We just see the writing on the wall.
Yeah, the writings on the wall. Yep, it's a good way to put it.
I remember at one of our meetings this was talked about and the borough manager said he had a lot of calls on that out there, but I haven't never heard of what maybe they might want to put in. That's what we really need to know, like what was, what was talked about here. What do these people want to build out here? Can you give us any examples that maybe?
We, we have developers and I don't know what they want, but significant interest.
But, but he said he had a lot of calls on it, what kind of people.
We had quite a few different calls and had quite a few different meetings as well. The, the issue is Frank, is that we, we're not prepared to get to that point yet.
But didn't they give you any idea of what maybe they wanted to put in?
Well, we had places like, say Susquehanna Glass, they're looking at that, you know, moving out there. Problem with that is, is that would almost make us want to develop that area in order to have them in.
Yeah, that's, that's, I would think you'd have to have that before you did the infrastructure, wouldn't you?
We're not doing, exactly. That's exactly what we're saying is, is we feel, again, at this point, we would feel comfortable moving forward with the soil stabilization, but we do not feel comfortable building any infrastructure until we have a clearer picture of what this is going to look like.
Do you have any idea after the soil stabilization? And I know that we have, it's just an idea. How much money do we have to add to BIOS?
I, I don't feel comfortable throwing a number at that tonight, Mayor, until I get a.
I didn't want to put you on the spot.
No, it's, it's not an unreasonable question, but we don't have.
My thought, what I'm here for, I'm leaving.
Yeah.
My guess is you may not be able to do everything you wanted, that, that had been discussed previously.
No.
That we seem to be shying away from.
Right.
But there may be an advantage to stub up utilities.
Yep.
To the edge of the property.
Yep.
To put curb cuts in.
Yep.
Those kind of things. That's going to cost money and there may be an advantage to do that because that's always a given. Just want to have to commit in certain spots, gas, water, sewage, is all going to have to commit in a certain spot and you can bring it in and stuff it up.
Good.
Yep, and that's kind of what, what we were thinking is how far into the property do we bring those utilities?
Yeah, we could, we could define, you know, okay, if we're positive that Franklin 11th are going to be the two access points, maybe we even build a road 50 feet in with all of those, all decisions that, that need to be made and again.
And that's what you see typically in developments. You bring things in, you stub it up and then you can branch off from it.
Yep.
And that's why I take considerable dollars.
We, we don't.
My guess is we want to eat a lot of that BIOS stuff with the stabilization and doing those kind of things.
Yes. That was the thing I don't want to lose sight of here, that no matter what the final disposition is, the lights that are currently sitting down at the Public Works Building need to be included with the sales so that they can be used out there.
They're the perfect time.
They are the perfect time.
And, and the perfect deal.
Yes, the perfect deal. They need, the lights need to go.
Yep.
Yes, Jared.
Yes, they are Frank.
I just wanted to say that I agree with the mayor on some, because there have been, I'd say within the last eight weeks or a couple of months anyway, that you had mentioned you weren't quite sure yet whether you would lease or sell. And I think sell is the only way because we know what we're involved with the other leases that we have now with KT Graham and so forth. So I also wanted to touch on what Todd said because the borough actually did vote, council voted to buy that in, I think it was 2017 and backed out of the deal. And through their attorney, they were able to get their deposit back and they backed out of that deal at the time because the letter from the attorney stated that it was unsatisfactory conditions. So I think it sounds to me, and I voted no to purchase that when I was on council, but it sounds to me like the right steps are being taken to stabilize it and so forth. But I, I certainly would hope that we could, could do as the mayor said and sell it. So, thank you.
Any other questions, comments, concerns, anything? Jason, thank you very much for coming here tonight. I know you were a little nervous. I hope it wasn't too bad. And we didn't even meet for tacos, I'm sorry. See, and thank you, Jason. All right. Onto the action items. That was a good, thank you all for the good conversation, the good discussion. I think that helps everyone understand what's going on, where we're at. Action items. Could I have a motion to authorize the bill payments?
Second.
A motion by councilperson Geezy, second by councilperson Murphy to authorize the bill payments. Questions, comments? Well, all right, I have a motion by councilperson Geezy, second by councilperson Murphy to authorize the bill payments. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Next, could I have a motion to authorize staff to charge the 2024 permit fee rate for the Chip Factory Hotel project?
Second.
A motion by councilperson Kaufman, second by councilperson Geezy to authorize staff to charge the 2024 permit fee rate for the Chip Factory Hotel project. As Eric brought up at the last meeting, we had received the request that since the rates did go up between 2024 and 2025, asking if we could keep that permit fee at the 2024 rates.
I had a comment on this. I was just doing a little research and I believe our fee schedule is actually, could be out of line in terms of commercial building permits. So looking at Lancaster City's fee schedule, they have a separate, they have like a tiered plan, so to speak, on, on permitting commercial projects. And for their residential projects, they're actually higher than ours, just for residential or small dwellings. We have, the 2025 schedule I think is $10 per thousand above like the standard. There's just $15 per thousand. But then in the commercial, it's a separate, they have a completely separate tiered layout for building projects. And the larger the project, if they're building a skyscraper, that's the lower rate and it's a per square foot fee to allow for much larger structures with a reasonable fee. So I would suggest, I mean, maybe, maybe this is something that we look at the next work session and, and look at upgrading and making our commercial fee schedule more conducive and affordable for incentivizing larger projects.
Does anyone else have any questions, comments?
The original request, the request is, what was, what was the total number, dollar amount of fees before the fee increase? Around $45,000.
Right, $44,000.
And they essentially doubled with the new fee structure.
Correct.
Here's what I believe. This project's been in motion since 20, what, 2018 or something? So many things have gotten in the way of this project outside of everybody's control. They're ready to pull the trigger. Few days go by and suddenly everything that was budgeted for gets blown out of the water. I'm, I'm inclined to go ahead and give them a break.
Pete has a good point. Structuring that. Because what you do, as you said Pete, the more square foot it is, the less per square foot the fee is. That spurs economic development on a larger scale. That's a good deal. And, and the one that sticks in my mind that we dealt with down here at the apartments on Front Street and, and we want to deal with it at the Chip Factory Hotel, they probably already dealt with it. When Columbia Borough had its own wastewater treatment plant, there was a fee for, for hookup. And many times, municipal authority relaxed that fee to spur development. We had been, Myers Brothers and I think Mr. Murphy had been in contact with the sewer authority now, since we changed and we're with, with LASSA. They're, they're reluctant to change that fee. You know, so technically, you know, they may not like what I'm going to say here, but technically they are holding back economic development by, by putting those fees and not being able to negotiate those fees on certain projects to make those projects happen. The apartments almost didn't happen because of the fee they had to pay to hook up the sewer. It was an exorbitant cost. And, and we talked to them about it. They said, we never did this before, we're not going to do it. That discussion needs to happen someday because that's not helping, not only Columbia Borough, every, every municipality on that system is hurting them with economic development, not being able to adjust those fees. And you're on, I think you're spot on Pete, and I think Lancaster City picked up on it.
Yeah.
So Peter, are you saying that if we wait to vote on this, that there's a possibility that our permit fee could even be less than the 2024 rate?
I would, yes, I am saying that.
Okay.
He needs these permits approved and paid to get moving, correct?
Right.
Times are the essence, I don't know.
They have their demolition permit. I don't know if they, do they, are they waiting on?
We can't wait two months to kick this around.
It, it was budgeted for what fees were before. Everybody was willing to, to go move forward with that. I'm happy moving forward with that.
Yes, Frank.
One of my questions is, why wasn't this paid in 2024?
Because they didn't apply for the permits in 2024. It was still, yeah.
So if you applied for it in 2025, here's what the fees are, what, what's the problem? I know if, if I, if I had a bill in 2024 and I didn't pay it to 2025, now you're saying it wasn't, but it's always going to be more. Hey, you set the fees, this is what it is. What, what else do we have to give? And another question, what's the difference? How much are you people voting on it's going to be the change from 2024 to 2025? Somebody tell me how much that difference is.
Double. Double. Double the fee.
Yeah.
From 2024 to 2025.
Say it again, I.
Double, twice as much. In 2025, it's twice as much as 2024. Uh, 40,000, 40,000.
About, you say about 40,000? Yeah, I didn't see nothing in the letter. The only thing I seen in the letter is how great this project is and what it's going to do for the borough and, and what, which is good, you know, but there was nothing getting into the detail part of it.
We discussed that.
Frank, what I was, what I was saying is our fee schedule is reflective of residential building permits. We don't have a fee schedule that's comparable to other, like Lancaster City.
I wondered why you brought that up.
It's not comparable for commercial properties because in a commercial property, you're getting hundreds of thousands of square feet put into a building and the fee schedules for a building that might be 3,000 square feet or 2,000 square feet. And so it's really absorb, like it's exorbitant. It's, it's over the top. It's meant for a residential property, not for a comparable commercial building permit fee in the area.
How, how do we miss that? By not putting that in there?
It just wasn't in there.
It just never came up.
We have a flat fee.
Is it possible that we could vote on this tonight and then put something in there that if we were to change the fee schedule for commercial property, that he could be reimbursed for that amount?
I would think it would just honor when we vote on tonight.
Yeah.
And we wouldn't take anything else. All, all he's asking is for us to know what that price was. He's not asking for any additional stamps.
Any other questions, comments? All right, I have a motion by councilperson Kaufman, second by councilperson Geezy to authorize staff to charge 2024 permit fees for the Chip Factory Hotel project. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right. Next. We'd like to reschedule the March 25th council meeting to March 27th and we need to have that advertised. Does anyone have a problem voting on this one?
No.
Do I have a motion to reschedule the March 25th council meeting to March 27th and authorize the advertisement?
That's the same night as River. But how's that impact that, Mary? Change it to 27th, there's, that's the River Park Steering Committee meeting. Okay, so that, that won't impact it.
I have a motion by councilperson Geezy. Do I have a second?
Sure.
A motion by councilperson Geezy, second by councilperson Kaufman to reschedule the March 25th council meeting to March 27th and authorize its advertising. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, Harb, we have a certificate of appropriateness for construction of a five-unit townhouse at 440 North Fourth Street. This was recommended, approval with no conditions. Are there any questions? Does anyone have a problem voting on this one tonight?
The applicant's here.
Yep, the applicant is here.
Any comments?
Any comments? Andrew?
No. After the answer question, of course. Looking forward to getting started.
Do I have a motion to approve the certificate of appropriateness for construction of a five-unit townhouse at four forty North Fourth Street?
Oops, second.
A motion by councilperson Kaufman and a second by councilperson Murphy who approves the certificate of appropriateness for construction of a five-unit townhouse at four forty North Fourth Street. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed?
It's going to be nice to have that corner.
Yes, yes.
Thank you.
Is he signing Paul for this?
Yes. Do you mind?
You want to sign it?
Oh, Andy Joseph.
That's why I was confused.
Good signature.
Thank you. Next, we have facilities use request for Ashley Tabernacle to host their annual baptism using the River Park boat launch area on August tenth, twenty twenty-five from three to six P M. Um contingent upon receipt of the required certificate of insurance. This is an annual thing. All right, I have a motion by councilperson Kaufman, second by councilperson Geezy to approve the use request for Ashley Tabernacle close South Fifth Street, or I'm sorry, to, to host their annual baptism using the River Park Boat Launch Area on August tenth, twenty twenty-five contingent on the receipt of required certificate of insurance. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? All right, and we also have facilities use request for Ashley Tabernacle to close South Fifth Street from Avenue K to Union Street for a block party, yard sale, health food, food garden on Saturday, June fourteenth, from ten A M. to five P M. contingent upon receipt of certificate of insurance.
Jack, this is the same one you did last year, correct?
Yeah.
And they were um using the fire police, I believe, last year to enforce traffic.
Uh, this one is in conjunction with the car show.
Oh, okay.
The fire police are tied up with that.
Yeah.
We did use crossing cars.
Yes.
Is that what it was? I just remember something like that.
That's what they actually had uh basically a bed on two blocks.
Right.
Two hundred blocks out there, and also two hundred block. I don't believe that there will be any two hundred block.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Do I have a motion?
Does anyone want to make that motion?
I'll motion.
Second.
I have a motion by councilperson Kaufman, second by councilperson Murphy to approve facilities use request for Ashley Tabernacle to close South Fifth Street from Avenue K to Union for a block party, yard sale, health food, food garden on Saturday, June fourteenth, from ten A M. to five P M. Contingent upon the receipt of the required certificate of insurance. All in favor? Aye. Anyone opposed? Uh, next, we have requests from staff to um the resolution, or to, we're asked to approve the destruction of aged documents.
Items.
Documents.
The list, the list is in the packet though, is more than documents.
Just tiny.
Yeah, there's, actually, there's there's two motions.
Okay.
Ones for documents and ones for um equipment, stuff.
Yep.
Did we do them before as a resolution?
I don't remember.
You may have, but it, as far as I know, it is not required for it to be a resolution. I think a simple motion is just fine, especially as long as you're following the records retention policy.
What does the word aged mean? Like what documents are you talking about?
There, yeah, so you, you have adopted um the PHMCs, which is the museum company, their records retention manual, which is, I, I want to say like two hundred and eighty-five pages long, that basically goes through and says, here's what you have to save, what type of document you've got to save for how long? And it lists, it's literally two hundred and eighty-five pages of that. So you guys have adopted that, as most municipalities have, and so when, when something gets past that, then you ask to destroy that, which is what you're doing here tonight. So you don't have mountains of paperwork that you're keeping from fifty years ago.
And just to be clear, this one, this motion covers time sheets from nineteen eighty-six to twenty nineteen. Uh, but nineteen ninety-three and nineteen ninety-nine are missing. This also includes journal entries from twenty seventeen, accounts payable from twenty seventeen, and the wastewater daily billing from twenty seventeen. Any questions? Do I have a motion to approve staff to destroy those aged documents?
Second.
A motion by councilperson Kaufman, second by councilperson Murphy to approve staff to destroy aged documents. All in favor? Aye. Anyone opposed? Next, um, we have the, we're asked to approve destruction of used police equipment and technology, and that is a lot more than the items before, so I'll refer you to the, to the list that is in the packet.
Do we have a vendor in mind to do this already? Is there a, for a vendor?
Yeah.
Um, some of this we're going to do on our own. Uh, for example, uh, hard drives, we would destroy. But all of the, uh, much of this would probably be taken to the cemetery.
Okay. If there's anything that, I'm just throwing this out there. If there's anything that needs, that could be recycled, electronics-wise, hard drives, computers.
Recycle.
Oh, they do?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, because I have a, I know somebody, a vendor that does that. With you, but we have a solution.
The, most of this stuff is outdated tech, although the only question I had was on the eight Panasonic ToughBooks. Because of, because of my line of work, I actually know there's a market online for these because people like buy them from law enforcement, former, for, former law enforcement ToughBooks are out on the market on eBay for like two hundred and fifty dollars a piece, usually without a hard drive because obviously it had sensitive uh information on the hard drives that pulled. Okay, so they're the late, not the latest model. Okay, understood.
Any questions?
Yeah.
Does anyone want to make a motion to approve staff to destroy used police equipment and technology? A motion by councilperson Bregard, second by councilperson Kaufman to approve staff to destroy used police equipment and technology. All in favor? Aye. Anyone opposed? All right, staff reports, comments, and announcements. List or gable?
I don't have anything further this evening.
Um, engineer Ronaldo.
C D B G round for twenty twenty-five is going to be opening soon, so we're going to be discussing uh our next potential project, and you'll see that in front of you soon for authorization of a letter of intent. Um, I will note that work continues as we wrap up the pen dot bidding process for Walnut Street. Um, I will likely have some action items for you at the March eleventh meeting to deal with some final paperwork and authorization need to happen to get that project moving forward, but I've got about another month of hard work on that, and then we're going to be ready to bid and build.
Secretary of Treasury, Mr. Paul.
Nothing additional to report.
All right, in your packet, there's approved minutes from Harb from January eighth, Parks and Rec from December twelfth, Planning Commission workshop January twenty-first, Planning Commission regular meeting on January twenty-first. Borough Council comments, council. Yes.
I had hoped this would have been in your packets this evening. At the February eighteenth Planning Commission meeting, I had presented to Planning Commission for their review my report to Borough Council of our twenty twenty-four activities. I would like to present this to you this evening with a copy to be forwarded to all of councils.
Okay. Oh, okay. Yeah, no, I wasn't notified that it needed to be in, so.
It's in the March eleventh packet.
Okay.
Yes.
If anybody has any questions. Yeah. Yes.
And in looking at the L P N, the paper, I seen where Hanfield uh had a, a meeting on their elected officials running for the next office. Uh, I know, uh, I heard that Columbia had a meeting here too, but I didn't see nothing in the paper. So could I maybe ask who might be rerunning that's on council now? I think Peter, you're up, Barb was up, I think Todd, you're up. Could I ask if yours are rerunning?
I don't know that they've made a decision.
I've not been in any meeting.
What's your, what's your thoughts? Are you going to rerun?
I love council, Frank.
I'm sorry.
I love council.
Yeah. Barb?
Um, I'm not running again.
Peter?
Uh, I guess I, I'm not going to make a public comment currently.
Well, that's okay, but if, if we knew, it would be nice somehow if, if council could, you know, put a feeler out there to try and get other candidates, and that's my only reason for asking.
Do you have any candidates?
I, I don't know of any people asked, but I don't know if they want to run or not. I just tell them it's a thankless job.
If they're interested, send them our way.
It absolutely is.
All right.
Thank you.
Councilperson stall.
Nothing tonight, thanks.
Councilperson Murphy.
Uh, just, I received an email, my home email, but Susquehanna Heritage, uh, the new park they have across the river. They're having a meeting tomorrow night from six to seven thirty. It's just like an information session, but you can ask questions there as well. It's at the Wright Soul Presbyterian Church, uh, two oh five North Second Street. That's from six to seven thirty. That's all I have.
Councilperson Geezy. Councilperson Kaufman.
Nothing at this time.
Councilperson Fisher.
Nothing for me.
I have it from a good source that, uh, the Columbia Borough brand is on the whatever, that electronic billboard. Route thirty, it's now on that, whatever you call that structure, it's a forty, what do you call that?
Billboard.
Whatever, the post is the big. Anyway, it's on there, and I think it's a good thing, you know? I had, I had suggested to Mark years ago, man, we should take that underpass. Uh, it's like, paint a city Colombian, antiques and all kinds of stuff, wanted to draw people in. I, I think I think that little logo on that, on that that little logo on that billboard is, is, I think, going to do wonders for um top of mind awareness for our little borough. Who knows? In time, it might start drawing people in. Columbia, I drive past this all every day, Columbia, Columbia, oh, Columbia. Maybe I'll stop in there one day, sandwich or a cup of coffee.
You're absolutely right, Todd. Remember the discussions.
You should come here for antiques.
We, what we face during the construction of the, of the Frederick Royal Bridge being shut down, how, how are we going to bring people off of Route thirty into Columbia Borough? That's an attempt. There's one that's attempted, and more should be made yet.
I do have one more thing. For the Parks and Rec Committee, um, Todd Kenfield and Angela Germer both resigned, so uh, there is open capacity if you are interested in being on that committee. Uh, there's currently four.
No, there's five now.
Currently five, and it could be up to seven.
All right. Any final words? Um, Frank, you actually asked about what um what I was going to say. Uh, now is the time that petitions are being circulated for people to run for public office. If anyone is interested in running for, um, I think this year we have council, mayor, and tax collector and school board members. If you're interested in getting on the ballot, you have questions, you know, reach out to anyone here, reach out to, you know, anyone on the school board. They can help you with getting that information, um, figuring out what you need um to do to get on that, or if you have questions about what it's like serving on the boards, reach out, ask people. You know, we're more than willing to um to talk to you about that. I think he's saying L N P.
You mean L N P, right? Lancaster newspaper.
L N P.
L N P.
Is it L N P?
Yes.
You're forgetting.
Um, and reminder to council and also Mary, if you can remind Planning Commission, um, the statement of financial interests need to be completed, complete them online um for members of council, members of planning commission. And I think it's May first.
I hate to lose.
Yeah, I, I, I got one from County Planning Commission, but I do mine online. That way I can print it out and I can email it to the office and email it to county and you know, because what, you got to do multiple. Yep, so.
Where do you get that? Where do you get it?
I can get your one.
P A Ethics Commission.
Email it to the office?
Yeah.
P A Ethics.
Thanks, Joanne.
Thanks, Joanne.
Yep. Oh, yeah, it's really easy. It's nice because then you can, you can print it as a PDF and you can email it to wherever it needs to go. So you can do like multiple, you don't have to fill out the paper. Yep. Now, if you're running for office and you have to fill it out, you can still fill it out online, but you would have to print it out to put it into your petition. All right, um, announcement of next meeting at seven P M. on Tuesday, March fourth. Council will hold a workshop. But I have a motion to adjourn. A motion by councilperson Geezy, second by councilperson Kaufman to adjourn at eight forty-nine P M. All in favor? Aye. Anyone opposed? We're adjourned. We have checks to sign.